Councilmember Doug Young has our prayer and pledge. Mr. Young?
Please join me in a moment of silence. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening and welcome to the Murfreesboro City Council, March 25, 2010. Tonight, I think many of our residents and possibly those who were out last weekend on Saturday saw the remnants, the smoke, and perhaps the flames of quite a fire that we had near our square on the west side of our public square just down West Main Street. And I want to, on behalf of the council tonight, I've asked several of our firefighters to be here and our chief, Comey Gaines, to be recognized for the outstanding job, for the preparations that they have made, for the training that they have made, and for the way they have used the resources that our taxpayers have given them in fighting to control and contain that fire and to make sure that our city and our citizens were safe. So I'm going to ask Chief Gaines if he would to come to the podium tonight and introduce those people who played a part and a role of keeping us safe and we want to recognize our firefighters for the outstanding service that they give to our community and in particular for the efforts last Saturday. Chief Gaines.
Honorable Mayor, Council, City Administration, I would like to thank you for taking the time to recognize the hard work and effort of the men and women of Murfreesboro Fire Department. Excuse my voice, I'm a little bit under the weather, but I would like Assistant Chief Farley to come present and he will do the introductions.
All right, Chief Farley, welcome.
Welcome, Mayor and Council.
First of all- I knew you'd be on duty.
Yes, sir.
I knew you would.
Twenty-four-seven.
That's it.
Good answer. I wish I'd said that.
First thing I'd like to do tonight before we get started, Mayor and Council, is I want to thank the Mayor and Council and the administration and the taxpayers, like you said, for funding the things at the Murfreesboro Fire Department, the equipment, the firefighters. We couldn't do our jobs without you all and the taxpayers. Thank you. First thing I want to do as well is I want to brag on all the firefighters tonight. We just got just a few that basically were in the command staff of the fire scene that day. There was approximately about thirty-five to forty firefighters that were working that day that done an excellent job, and I want to thank all those personnel as well. First, I'd like to introduce Assistant Chief Ken Honeycutt.
Why don't you all come on up to the podium so we can recognize you on camera? Everyone, please.
Assistant Chief Ken Honeycutt, he's our fire marshal. He was there that day working and taking care of the, getting the investigation started as well. We've got Assistant Chief Alan Swater. Assistant Chief Swater is our train, he's in charge by Training Division. He's also our PIO. We also have here tonight Captain Inspector Kay Jernigan. She was the acting commander on duty that day and was the assistant commander of the scene that day.
Come on up, Kay. Thank you. Thank you.
We also have here tonight Assistant Fire Marshal Nora Smith. Nora was involved in getting the investigation started to try to find out what the cause and origin was going to be doing and the cause of that fire that day, so we want to thank her. Captain Ray Smith, Captain Smith was the captain on the Engine Company One that day. He commanded an engine crew and done some interior attacking, also went firefighting on the outside as well later on. We also have Captain Inspector Joe Bell. Captain Bell was the captain that day on Engine Company Fifteen, and his crew done an excellent job as well. We have here tonight Acting Captain Randy Shaw. Randy was the acting captain on Engine Three that day, and he commanded a crew of four and done an excellent job that day as well. We also have Acting Captain Raleigh Marlin. Raleigh was the acting captain on Engine Company Eight, our ladder eight, that day that commanded a crew of four and done an excellent job as well with his crew. I think that's everybody and want to thank you all for having us here tonight, and thank you all.
We have truly been blessed with an outstanding group of firefighters, and we try to recognize them every day in every way that we can to tell them how much we appreciate them. And we see them out on the highways with first responder duties. You are an outstanding group of individuals. You have great attitude, great motivation, and you teach us every day how wonderful it is to be a city employee and to take care of us in the city. And we really appreciate your service delivery and the smile and the professionalism with which you do that every day. Thank you. Thanks again. Very nice. And you're free to go or free to stay. I know many of you may still be on duty, so you might be heading out. Thank you. Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Chief Gaines. I believe we also had some family members here, and I apologize for not recognizing them, but I do appreciate them and certainly their keeping the home fires burning for our firefighters as they go out each day to protect and serve us. Thank you. Councilmembers, you have before you your consent agenda. If you have had an opportunity to take a look at your consent agenda, are there any questions regarding any of the actions that are requested under the consent agenda?
Mayor, seeing no questions, I would move for approval of the consent agenda.
All right, you have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion, second, on consent agenda. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher.
Aye.
Mr. Edwards.
Aye.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. Will now consider for passage on third and final reading and ordinance amending Appendix A zoning sections seven, eighteen, and twenty-seven pertaining to site plan review enhancements.
So moved. Second.
All right, you have a motion, second. Please call the roll on third reading.
Vice Mayor Bratcher.
Aye.
Mr. Edwards.
Aye.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. We have two certificates of compliance renewals that are requested tonight. The first is Matthew Edward McAfee and Cindy Alexander Church at Northside Liquors, 220 West Northfield Boulevard. Are they present? Thank you. All right. Ms. Wright, do they comply?
Yes, sir, they do. This is for a two-year renewal required by the state, and their background check came back without any problems.
Very good. Is there a motion that we accept this renewal of a certificate of compliance?
Move for approval. Second.
Motion in second. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher.
Aye.
Mr. Edwards.
Aye.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. Then we have Anket D. Patel at Victory Village Liquor and Wine, 4167 Franklin Road. He's present?
Yep.
Thank you. Ms. Wright?
Same thing, two-year renewal. His background check came back fine, so I recommend approval.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
So moved. Second.
Motion in second. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher.
Aye.
Mr. Edwards.
Aye.
Mr. Gilli.
Aye.
Mr. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Young.
Aye.
Mayor Bragg.
Aye. Pursuant to a resolution adopted by City Council on February the 11th, 2010, will now conduct a public hearing to consider a zoning request to rezone approximately 1.38 acres from RM 16 to PRD located along Cressland Avenue and Eaton Drive. Dr. Kurt and Rosemary Bloom are the developers. Notice of the said public hearing was published in the March 7, 2010 issue of the local newspaper. Good welcome, Ms. Gilli. How are you?
Great, thank you, and good evening to you, Mayor and Councilmembers. The public hearing tonight is to consider a zoning request for six parcels that are located on the northwestern corner of Eaton Drive and Cressland Avenue. The properties are currently zoned RM 16 and allow multifamily residential development with a density of sixteen units per acre. All the surrounding properties are also zoned RM 16. Just a block to the east is the Middle Tennessee State University, MTSU, which is the zone college university. The subject area currently has five single-family houses and one two-family house located on it. The applicant would like for you to rezone the property from RM 16 to PRD to allow it to be redeveloped with apartments. Currently, the RM 16 zone would allow twenty-two dwelling units on this property since it's 1.38 acres. The proposed PRD would allow twenty-five dwelling units, so that would be an increase of three units for a density of 18.1 acres on this property. The primary reason the applicant is requesting for a planned development is so that there will be the flexibility in design as proposed in the program book before you. These lots are in an older part of our town and are currently existing, and the design plan has been outlined in the book before you. He's divided his plan into three phases. Phase one will keep six of the structures on the property and will add nine more units in the rear yard. And I have on the screen, phase one. Phase two will remove one of the existing residential structures and add six more units, and will add sidewalks along Cressland Drive at this time. And then moving to the last phase, which is phase three, they will remove four of the existing single-family structures that are located along Eaton Street and replace them with nine units. In total, there will be twenty-five dwelling units on this property with the owner keeping one of the existing structures, then adding twenty-four more. The property will be served by a private hauler, and there is a garbage location located on the site. And sidewalks will be added along Eaton and Cressland Avenue. The planning commission had six members present the evening of this public hearing, and all six members voted to recommend approval of this zoning request to PRD. Tonight, Enick Gerald is here, and he'd like to go over the plan with you, after which the City Council should conduct a public hearing. If anytime you have questions for staff, we'll be available to answer them. Mr. Gerald?
Mayor and members of the council, thank you very much. Again, my name is Enick Gerald with Hudson Steel Engineering. Also with me tonight is Mr. Eric Bloom. His parents, Dr. Kurt and Rosemary Bloom, own all six of these parcels located on Eaton and Cressland. Kevin Gunther with Design Resources also assisted with the development of this plan, meeting with staff as we've gone through this project. Let's see, I guess it's been five or six months and several meetings with staff to come to the plan we have today. As Margaret Ann said, we're, there's six existing homes that are older. One will remain, but five of them ultimately will be redeveloped and demolished. We have new structures. It's a block from MTSU, walking distance. And I've been by the site several times, and there's a lot of foot traffic, especially on Eaton to the school. We'll be providing sidewalks along Eaton and Cressland as it develops. I think the staff had a good idea as we got into this, developing the phases. The first phase is basically open lawn in the rear. And as we get into phase two, it'll be one home that'll be removed and be six more units built, and in phase three, it'll be four homes removed along Eaton and nine units placed there. I think some of the advantage of this development, what's good for Murfreesboro is that they'll provide additional housing for MTSU, which is needed. It's walking distance. Like I say, all of the parking will be off-street. Today, there's a lot of the houses use Eaton as parking, and we've provided, and that'll be provided in the first phase. The first phase will have all but two of these parking spaces provided, so in phase one, there'll be adequate parking for the entire development in phase one. We'll be providing sidewalks along Eaton and Cressland as it develops. I think some of the items from Planning Commission that was discussed, some of you members would remember, is existing trees on the west side of the property, sort of away from Cressland, there's an old tree row, and we'll be able to save most of those. There's a couple of trees within the rear yards that will be taken down. We will be providing some additional landscaping on the west side, some evergreen buffer there, and additional plantings along Eaton and Cressland as well. Once we get into the development, we'll evaluate the condition of the trees. A lot of these trees are older. Some of them are in fairly good shape, and some probably need to be replaced. But as we get into development, we'll evaluate that and replace those trees. And that's pretty much all the information that I've got unless there's any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Gerald from the council?
Will there be on-street parking?
Yes, sir. I mean, you can see the parking that we're providing, and that'll be in phase one. Like I say, phase one, you know, this is Eaton and Cressland, Middleton Street Boulevard's back here. This is, you know, right, there's a Human Sciences Building right here of MTSU. All of this parking, except for those two spaces right there, one of the homes is right, an existing homes is here that's in there, but all these will be built on the front end. Today, there's a lot of parking on Eaton, and that parking will be gone, will be, you know, not needed along Eaton Street because there's plenty of adequate parking provided internal to the site.
The majority of the parking, if I use this correctly, will be internal, though?
Yes, sir. I mean, we're going to provide fifty-five parking spaces internal in the site. We've got an access off of Cressland here, and there'll be a secondary access farther away from the intersection. But all the parking will be provided internal to the site.
Mr. Gilli?
And just to follow up, this might be a question better asked of Mr. Edelott, but the parking that is listed in their plan, does it meet the criteria and the requirements that we have in the city for parking for the type of buildings that they're putting up? Is that right?
Yes, sir. They actually exceed the required parking that we would have for any development that's multifamily. They have more than 1.1 parking spaces per bedroom. So they base them there. To clarify about the street, the parking, one of the things that I find attractive about this development, for the houses that front on Eaton Street, they currently have driveways, mailboxes down through there. What they're doing, they're going to be taking out those driveways, and they're going to be taking out those mailboxes, so that there will be on-street parking without any interruptions by driveways. And that will be in the public realm. They'll be available to anybody, not just the tenants, but also to anybody who wants to use them. And it will be much better use of the street. And the same way on Cressland Avenue, except for their two access drives into the development, the rest of the driveways will be removed so that they won't have it cut up by ours. I find that very attractive in this situation. And I also like the fact that with the first phase, they're going to build the whole parking lot except for where one of the trees is at, so that they can go ahead and get that in. And that will create a very good surplus of parking from the get-go. And also, instead of having the city's solid waste containers out on the street for garbage pickup, they'll be going to a commercial hauler, and they'll have their own dumpster on-site, properly located, properly screened, properly contained, which I also find to be a very attractive feature of this development.
Mr. Edelott, as far as sidewalks, if I'm right, are there sidewalks on right now on that area?
No, sir, there's not. And what they'll be doing is they build the buildings that front on those portions of the street, they'll be building the sidewalks. In phase one, there will not be a sidewalk, but in phase two, they'll build the ones on Cressland because they'll be taking those buildings out and going ahead and building it. With phase three, they'll take care of the sidewalks on Eaton because they'll be tearing out those buildings, and there'll be a construction zone. And I think you are familiar with how construction goes. Sometimes it's not best, it's best not to have a sidewalk in the way of a construction project. Because they won't want the heavy trucks coming in on the new parking lot. They want to be able to deliver materials from the other side.
I guess what my sort of observation was, that now, if you go over there in between classes or in the morning or late afternoon, you have on-street parking, so you have what's really a two-lane, or a two-lane road blocked by parking and cars are weaving in and out with people walking there, and now we've got basically a block of sidewalks that we're going to have now to access MTSU.
Yes. I find that, with the final phase, I find that to be something else that I find very attractive about this.
And all the entrances face the street? Is that what I'm seeing here? Of course, in the back, your fronts are facing the parking. Is that right?
Yes, sir. All of the units along Cressland and Eaton will face the, face the street.
Will face the street?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And the material that you're going to be building, is that, there's no masonry products?
No, sir. The, these will be vinyl units. It's, most of the units in the area, the existing homes are masonized siding. Most of the units in the area today are vinyl siding, so we're proposing vinyl siding to match the existing neighborhoods.
Other questions for Mr. Gerald? All right, if there are no other questions, I'll open the public hearing at this time. If there is anyone here wishing to speak for or against this particular rezon, or this zoning request, please step to the microphone and give us your name and address.
Good evening, council. Thomas Moss, I live at 322 North Manny, and was fortunate enough to be able to have a conversation with some of the individuals who are living in these houses and those who will be looking at this new complex once it's completed. And I just wanted to bring a few of their comments, on behalf of them, I suppose, to the council tonight and to the construction individuals. Again, another concern that I did hear addressed was the trees on-site. Everyone that I talked to was rather interested to see how many of the trees would be spared, and the green space there, of course, you know where the parking lot is going to go, is now just a very large field. And so that was another suggestion maybe that we could look into. Also, the aesthetics of the building itself. Again, no offense to the designer there, but those who saw the actual building would really prefer a more aesthetically pleasing structure to look at for the next, however long it would be there. I would also argue the fact that I don't believe most of the buildings in that area are vinyl. I would say they're mostly brick and wood, since most of these houses are built in the forties, fifties, and sixties. They do have an older feel. A lot of character goes with these buildings. And so maybe a modification of the design would please those residents who are going to have to look at that, and just the general feel of that neighborhood, so. I think that's all I've got now, unless you guys have any questions of me, then I think I'm good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else here wishing to speak for or against? Anyone at all? Last chance. I'll close the public hearing at this time. We'll consider for passage on first reading and ordinance to rezone an area located along Cressland Avenue and Eaton Drive.
So moved.
I've got it.
Is there a second?
I'll second then, I don't think Mr. McFarland has some questions.
All right, we have a second, Mr. of this discussion, Mr. McFarland.
I was just seeing if Mr. Edelott could answer the questions regarding existing trees.
What question is that?
The tree line, and I read in the minutes at the Planning Commission that Mr. Gilli had also talked about that, about the existing tree line, the trees that are there, on how many will be spared or how the developers plan on doing that.
Well, certainly the trees on the western property line, which is where there's a mature tree row, it's going to be their effort to keep those trees intact. I think they made a commitment to not only keep the fence intact, but to add a six-foot privacy fence. And part of the idea is to keep the pedestrian, cut-through traffic in that area. It's not uncommon for people to take shortcuts, and there's a little bit of a concern about people coming through people's backyard that front over on Fairview. So what they want to do is add a six-foot privacy fence and to keep the existing tree row back there. That's easy to do. They can keep the grading and the construction off of them. The trees that front on Eaton Street, they're going to try to keep some of them. Now, some of those are, on one hand, they're trees and they're alive, but they aren't in that good a shape. So on a case-by-case basis, they will evaluate which ones can be kept. Those are outside the building footprint. Basically, the new buildings will be going back where the old buildings are, so there's no trees very much right there except for the ones between the houses, and they're not in very good shape. But the ones in the front yard, right there behind the curb, some of them are just beginning to, well, they're not beginning, they're well advanced into some poor health. So it may be best for some of those to be selectively either heavily pruned or to be removed. A couple of trees over on Cressland, it looks like they'll be able to keep. One of the things you can see on your exhibit on page ten, and actually on page, page ten is phase three, you can see the trees in particular are going to try to keep. They're the ones that have the big blue canopies. Those are the ones that they're going to target for keeping. But again, they're going to assess them as they get into the construction to see if they're worth saving. And they're going to go into it with the idea of if they're worth it, if the health is viable. But if that tree's not viable, it's probably best that it be removed, but have the equipment on-site to do it safely without jeopardizing any buildings.
Mr. Gilli?
Mr. Gilli? Mr. Edelott, in summary, what we did discuss at the Planning Commission was that the intent was if a tree can be, a mature tree can be saved on this project, our desire was for the developer to attempt to save those trees. And again, I realize health of the tree comes into play, but the intent from our discussions at the Planning Commission and the Developer Act we asked to was to try to save mature trees if at all possible and as feasible.
That's correct. And we'll return to that issue when we have our, the more detailed survey for our site plan review at the Plan Commission level.
The other thing is if they're, if they're really scrub trees or something, their property will be enhanced by removing those that are damaged or old and replacing them with something that Ms. Holloway would certainly be able to recommend.
And Mayor, I think that's a good follow-up point. The trees that are removed, something else will go, should go in place.
Right.
Mr. Edelott?
And we'll be seeing this back again at the Plan Commission level with the field survey data to bid and show what can be, and assess that with our city hardening cultures.
As well as a planning, I mean, we've got an idea on the planning plan, but that's something that will have to be an extensive planning plan that will go through that Planning Commission process.
You know, I want to thank the developer. I appreciate their attention to the detail and listening, obviously, to the neighborhood. And redevelopment sometimes is very difficult, and I congratulate you for being able to put these properties together, and I hope and assume that you will do a good job of being good stewards, put back something that will be attractive to that neighborhood, and hopefully to build on it, very similar to what we're seeing on the corner of East Main and Middle Tennessee Boulevard, something that we can be proud of, and people can live there and go on and learn and educate and raise their families if they want to. So I thank you and appreciate your work on it. All right, you have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? If not, Ms. Wright, would you please call the- If not, Ms. Wright, would you please call the roll?
Vice Mayor Bratcher?
Aye.
Mr. Edwards?
Aye.
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye.
This time, we'll consider recommendations of the Risk Management Committee with regards to bids for the police professional liability insurance. Ms. McGannon?
Mayor Bragg, members of the council, on behalf of the Risk Management Committee and staff, I bring to you a recommendation to accept a bid for police professional liability insurance coverage. I'm pleased to say that it will be more coverage for less money than we are currently paying. The recommendation is to accept the proposal from National Fire Insurance Company of Hartford, which is part of CNA, for $2 million per occurrence, $3 million annual aggregate, with $25,000 per claim deductible. The first year's premium is $120,922. That represents a saving slightly over $87,000 from our current policy. It is bid on a three-year basis, but subject to annual rerating as to premium. I'd be happy to answer any questions. We did submit out for proposals, got three bids with different options as to the deductible and the coverage, both as per occurrence and aggregate limits, and we believe that this gives the city the best value for the money.
Any questions for Mrs. McGannon on this bid?
Mayor, no questions, but I would like to say thank you to Ms. McGannon and to Mr. Rucker, for all the, and their staff, for the work they put into this. Chair of that commission, I'd like to take credit for this, but it's all staff that was able to work with the agencies and get these savings for what we're getting here. With that, I would move for approval of the recommendation.
All right, you have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
You have a motion, second. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher?
Aye.
Mr. Edwards?
Aye.
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye.
Thank you.
Do we have any beer permits applications?
Mr. Mayor, we have three tonight. We have a new location, that's a restaurant at 2568 South Church Street, Suite E. We have an ownership change for a restaurant at 2053 Last Castle Pike, and we have a pharmacy ownership change at 106 West Northfield Boulevard, and they have met our requirements.
All right, all have met the requirements. Is there a motion? We accept. Please bear permit.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher?
Aye.
Mr. Edwards?
Aye.
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye.
You have before you revised list of the statements to be considered for payment. Are there any questions regarding those items that are listed? If not, is there a motion that we pay the bills?
Ed Wills?
All right, we have a motion and second. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher?
Aye.
Mr. Edwards?
Aye.
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye.
The only Board of Commission appointment that I would recommend to you tonight is Ron Crabtree, who's going to be leaving our Stormwater Advisory Committee, because I believe we're going to fold that into the Water and Sewer Board at some point in the future. And I would recommend that Ron be moved to our Cable TV Commission.
So moved.
Second.
All right, a motion and second. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher?
Aye.
Mr. Edwards?
Aye.
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye.
This time, is there other business from the staff of the council to come before the council? Mr. Whitaker?
Mayor, council, previously, the city had made application for an energy efficiency block grant, and the amount of $961,000, I believe. And after application was submitted, the Department of Energy had given us a few items that we need to address. One of those items was that there could not be any contingency money in our submissions. The contract between city and Grigs and Maloney had a contingency in there. Before you tonight, you have an amended contract with Grigs and Maloney to remove that contingency amount. What we proposed to do with the contingency is we have included that into the, basically just diffuse that into the original contract lines. You can see that it's been separated in there. The total amount of the contract has not changed. The billing for the contract has not changed. They will still bill on a time and material basis with the same total. So the contract basically is, the reason we're doing this is just to meet the Department of Energy requirements.
The total amount is $96,100, is that correct?
That was the total, yes, sir.
And the final finished total will still be that same amount?
Absolutely. And one thing I'd like to point out is that money is actually coming, was allocated, come out of that block grant for that. And part of what that contract was for is they helped us devise our strategy plan as well as our application.
All right. So you have this recommendation from the coach director.
So, Mr. Whitaker, really, all we're talking about is a change in the budgeting format of the same dollars.
That is correct.
Into a format that's approved by the DOE.
Right. They had three items that we need to address. This is one of the three. Once we resubmit, hopefully, we will, they will allot the money, and then we start design phase of, to change out the mechanical systems. Mayor, I move for approval.
All right, you have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher?
Aye.
Mr. Edwards?
Aye.
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Whitaker. Other business, Mr. Kirchner?
Thank you, mayor, members of the council. This evening, I have a request for emergency sole-source purchase of a cylinder at the wastewater treatment plant. There are four rotating stainless steel screens at the headworks, so it provides the initial treatment at the wastewater treatment plant. These rotating screens have a .08 inch opening, removing practically all the coarse particulate matter and floating materials and stringy materials that save from clogging and fouling the processes below, the pumps and things. The number three screen had a total structural failure. This is about a 20-foot-long cylinder, about five foot in diameter, stainless steel, that's housed in a cowling, and it rotates, and the water passes through, and the solids, the water drops through, and the solids remain in the cylinder, and then are passed through to a receiving area. This facility was initiated in 1997. The cylinders, all four cylinders operate and give us about 40 million gallons a day of capacity. It was designed so that with one cylinder out, we could remain in business, so we don't have any redundancy now. So it's important that we proceed with the purchase of a replacement cylinder. Parts Incorporation is the manufacturer of the cylinders and the system that we use, and we recommend that you, under the emergency purchasing requirements of 2910(c) of the city code, is to purchase the cylinder material only on an emergency basis. The sales quotation is attached, the cost of the cylinder is $27,500, not including the freight or special crating. And it usually needs to be special crating so that it doesn't get egg-shaped or damaged as it's transferred to us. There's about a six-week lead time in this, so it's important that we proceed with the purchase of this cylinder. In the meantime, we're going to put an invitation to bid out for general contractors, contractors to install this cylinder. So we've got sufficient time now in order to do that, so when the cylinder is available to us, it'll be able to be installed. The Water and Sewer Boards recommend approval of expenditure of up to $50,000 per drum for a total not to exceed $200,000 for replacement of drums as we need. We inspected the other drums. One had some minor cracking, and we had a local welder weld those back. The others appear, have no observable defects, but these are, you know, in a pretty harsh environment, and they're covered, and it's hard to get a real good inspection, but we will continue to observe those over time. This is recommended for you this evening for the purchase of that equipment.
So you'll buy four screens?
Buy one.
One.
Just $27,500. And we will, in the meantime, we'll be evaluating what our future needs will be for the total replacement of the screens that are there. We're looking at a different technology. This technology was new in 1997. There's newer technology now that we think's better. So it depends on whether we try to replace in kind in the existing building or have another structure. A lot of that will be determined over the next few months.
Other questions for Mr. Kirchner? All right, you have this request for an emergency sole-source purchase.
Mr. Kirchner, let me ask you this.
Yes.
Sort of a short answer. Do we have an option not to purchase this?
No.
No.
We do, but... Well, I take it back, there would be, but it would take more time, a redesign of what we have, and it just, this is the square peg that fits in the square hole, and trying to make something to retrofit would be, would be hard to do at this time. We want to take a broader look at that with the future expansion.
Move for approval.
Second. Motion and second. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher?
Aye.
Mr. Edwards?
Aye.
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Young?
Aye.
Mayor Bragg?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Kirchner. Other business?
We just want to mention, on the fire this Saturday, we installed in January a fire hydrant in the alley between Vine and East Main, and that was used extensively Saturday in that fire, so it came in handy to them.
Now, why was that particular decision made? Can you share?
The...
Obviously, we didn't have coverage, or?
Well, the, a lot of the buildings on the square are starting to require fire sprinkler systems, and it's difficult to get that off of the front, off the square. We saw an opportunity, there was some redevelopment of a property there, and then another, two properties. And Roger Haley and I had talked about how we had approached this, and it looked to us that that was a responsibility of us, to get the larger line in, to make it available to those, that they could put quite an extensive cost in fire sprinkler systems in those buildings. I think there are two now that are being sprinkled off of that. You know, I expect more to be, there, well, there was three, because the Espina, I think, was sprinkled off of that. So I look for more to come in the future, when they're going to need those sprinkler systems to come off the back. We're looking to do a similar extension on the, I think that's College, behind Marina's, to come up that alley. We want to look at doing the same thing there, so we give opportunity for buildings on the square to put the sprinkler systems in, because you're talking $10,000 or $15,000 for a building to, that we've, it depends on the size, of course, and everything, but they'd have to invest to put a sprinkler system in. So it's quite an investment for them, and to ask them to put the water line and everything in on the outside that they need to is just not going to be cost-effective for them.
Well, thank you. I appreciate you bringing that to our attention, and my congratulations to you, and that's a service well provided, and certainly, it came in very handy, and thank you. Thanks for bringing that to our attention. All right, Mr. Lyons, you had another item?
Sir, I have a request here that I want to bring to you as a recommendation. I'm referring to our housing authority has purchased a property at 523 East Castle Street. They're looking for future redevelopment. That structure is substandard, and they've asked for the city assistance in demolishing that structure. So my recommendation to you would be to grant permission to have the street department to knock that building down. We'll haul it to the landfill, at which point, Rutherford County will waive the fees, so there is no out-of-pocket cost to my recommendation, but working in partnership with the housing authority, I'd recommend your approval.
Are there any questions, Mr. Lyons, regarding this recommendation?
Move for approval.
Second.
All right, you have a motion and second. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bratcher?
Aye.
Mr. Edwards?
Aye.
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
Mr. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Young?